Welcome to the City of Rapid City Planning Commission September 4, 2014 meeting. Some housekeeping items, if any member of the audience wishes to speak to an item on the agenda, there are speaker request forms to the left of the dais. Please fill out the request with the agenda item that you wish to speak to and hand it to the secretary. Cell phones and electronic devices. At this time, we'd ask that any member of the audience that has a cellphone or other electronic device, that you either turn it off or turn the ringer to silent. If you need to take a call, please step out to the hallway so that the meeting will not be disrupted. Consent calendar. Items one through three have been placed on the consent calendar and may be approved as a group. Action will be taken on all consent items in accordance with staff recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent calendar by a planning commission or staff member, audience member for separate consideration at this time. The findings of the planning commission are recommendations to city council. The city council will make the final decision with the exception of the following items. Item two, 14 UR 018. Item three, 14 PD 026. The planning commissions actions on these items are final unless a party appeals the decision to the Rapid City Council. All appeals must be submitted in writing to the planning, excuse me, to Community Planning and Development Services Department by the close of business on the seventh full calendar day following action by the planning commission. Are there any items one through three that staff would like removed from the, are there any items any planning commissioner would like removed from the consent calendar for separate consideration? Are there any items that an audience member and I have no request forms? The chair would entertain a motion to approve this consent calendar items one through three.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Item's been seconded, or moved and seconded to accept items one through three on the consent calendar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Motion passed. We are now to the regular agenda items. Thank you.
Madam Chair, item number four is a major amendment to a plan development to allow an electronic reader board sign and to revise the landscaping plan for property located in the southeast corner of North Street and Haynes Avenue. And with that, I'll show you some slides. It's the one identified in pink, as you can see, it is in a planned development. The aerial of the property, there is an existing 12,000 square foot office commercial building located on the west end of the property. The parking lot is on the east side. There is residential development to the north of North Street, an apartment complex located south of the site, and then you've got the hotel and civic center to the west. This is graphic provided by the applicant of the proposed sign. The sign that's there today will be relocated to this location. It's about fifteen and a half foot tall, six foot wide, and the portion that they would like to make a reader board is that that is shown in the flag configuration. It measures about three and a half foot tall, five foot eight inches wide. This would be the location it would be moved to, and I can, I've got some site photos I took yesterday to show where it's at currently. This provides better visibility as you're coming north and south along Haynes as well as North Street. It does meet the setback requirements of the sign code. The size of the overall sign does not exceed the sign code as well, and it does only advertise on premise uses. Little closer graphic showing the electronic reader board. This is identifying the exact dimensions of where that sign will be located, and as I said, it does meet the requirements of the sign code. This is a graph, a photo that I took. You can see the sign in the distance and the landscaping that's currently there. Part of what they want to do is change up the landscape plan that was previously submitted to what's existing. They exceed the landscape points that are required by almost double, and in walking the property yesterday, they do have some beautiful landscaping on the site, and they do have a wonderful water feature right at the corner of North Street and Haynes Avenue. The sign was posted showing that it is a part of a planned development, and you can see that the current location of the sign, if you're not traveling in a certain portion of Haynes Avenue, you really can't see the sign. Again, looking back at that intersection, this shows the apartment buildings to the south, the hotel and the civic center to the west. This is looking north on Haynes Avenue. That sign is dropped a significant distance south so as not to interfere with that intersection. Looking at some of the residential development to the north, and then looking east on North The sign itself is permitted. The landscaping certainly exceeds what's required. We are recommending that the the sign and the landscaping be approved with the stipulations as identified in the staff report. But at your request, the portion of the sign that is a reader board is being brought to you for your determination. As I said, it is about three and a half foot tall, five foot eight inches wide. It would only be used to advertise those uses that are on the property. Because of the residential development in the area, they will have an automatic dimmer on it, and it will dim from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So if it is your determination that this is an appropriate location in this corridor for the electronic reader board, then we've provided you with the recommendations to bring forward for it, and we leave that decision to you. We do have applicant representatives here in the audience if you have any questions for them.
Any questions? You wish to speak, sir? Okay. Motion's been made to approve this. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. Amanda has a question. I didn't see the light.
If I may, Madam Chair, just for clarification, Vicki, on those dimmers, can they be set by time? I'm just thinking as we're going into winter and they're predicting a snowstorm in the hills next weekend, as we get into the darker areas, can those dimmers be set to accommodate the different time, whether it's summer or winter or crossover?
They can, they can, and they can even be light sensitive so that as it gets darker, they dim, and that's something that we can certainly work with, and the the sign company representatives are here, and so certainly if that's a concern that's voiced today, we will work with them as we're issuing that sign permit to ensure that it's light sensitive as well as time sensitive.
Thank, the only reason I bring it up is I know that there's been other members on the planning commission that have mentioned before the brightness of the sign versus the area in which it is, and since it does butt up against a residential area, the dimming might become a, an issue if it's not handled correctly due to seasonal. So, thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to ask that question.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Item number five.
Thank you. Item number five is 14 PD 024. Major amendment to the final plan development to allow a statue of liberty structure to be located on approximately 8.56 acres of property located at 620 East Mall Drive. This is the existing Ripon Rapids Water Park Resort, which is currently under construction. A little history, the final plan development for this was approved in 2013 as, with an on sale liquor establishment for the restaurant and the uses anticipated within the water park. Earlier this year, staff approved a minimal amendment to the plan development to alter the site layout and the parking plan for the site, and as a part of that application, the statue was also proposed. Staff determined that the statue would require a major amendment to the plan development, and thus we're bringing it forward to you here today. Let me take you through some slides. You can see the location of the property is located in a planned development, an area generally developing as a general commercial district. Area view of the property. The statue's actually proposed to be located in front of the Bossins Restaurant, which is right here. Later, I'll show you some slides that show you how the development is ongoing and how that's starting to take shape. This is a look at the statue as proposed. As you can see here, with that arched base there, the total height of the structure will be 45 feet tall, that's including the torch. We should note here, the applicant is, has shown us through submitted materials that the, the statue will not be, or will be ground illuminated, and the torch itself will not be illuminated, it will just be, the lights will shine up on it from the ground without lighting the torch specifically. Another look at the statue. Site plan. To put this in reference for you, this is the Bossins here, and this actually right here is the location of the statue. If you get a chance to take a look at that, it's located on a 16-foot by 16-foot square Look at the site, or look at the site. This is North La Crosse Street, looking north towards the intersection of North La Crosse and East Mall Drive. You can see to the right there, the sign is posted on the property. This is a look at the Bossins where the actual statue will be located at. For point of reference, the location of that central light pole there, right in the middle, right here, is the location of where the statue's going to be. Look at the access drive to, or from East Mall Drive, looking to the west. Looking to the east, this road accesses the hotels on the south side of the road, and then also the Hilton Garden Inn, which is a part of the Ripon Rapids Resort. An alternate look at the Boston's site, looking towards the south, towards the neighboring hotels in the area. This is to give you an idea of how the Bossins will be incorporated into the rest of the Ripon Rapids Resort. The hotel is to be located here on the north side of the Bossins, and it will connect the Bossins from, or connect the Bossins to the water park, which is the white structure located there on the left of the screen. Another look at the ongoing development for Ripon Rapids. So, they have the hotel there, and then the parking will be located lower on the grade there, if you're familiar with the site, where the majority of the construction materials are being stored at the moment. It's another look at the Bossins from the intersection of North La Crosse and East Mall Drive, just to give you an idea of scale and scope. And one more look at the entire Ripon Rapids Resort site. Staff wanted to note that no exceptions or additional materials or expansions are being requested as a part of this major amendment to the plan development. And the addition of the statue does meet all landscaping, parking, and land area regulations of the general commercial district and the approved final plan development. That being said, however, staff does recognize that this is a very large sculpture, and it does, it is definitely going to have an impact on the neighborhood. So if the planning commission should determine that this use is appropriate for the neighborhood, then staff recommends that the requests be approved with the stipulations that we've outlined in the staff report. We do have representatives from Ripon Rapids here today to speak to you and answer any questions if you have any. With that, staff is open for questions.
Are there any questions for staff? Amanda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask a question? Due to the height on this, can you give us an approximation based on that light structure? How tall the statue, does a statue exceed the current height of the light?
Uh, that's a good question. I don't know the height of that light pole that I, that I pointed out in the, in the presentation. I'll bring it up here just for your consideration. The standards of the general commercial district and those approved through the final plan development do require a maximum height of 45 feet or four stories, whichever comes first. Based on the submitted drawings from the applicant, it does appear that the statue will be at that 45-foot height limit.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just looking at the existing Bossins, it's a one-story structure with a parapet. We've got the one architectural feature in the middle of the building. I think it's going to exceed that. David Papin is here in the audience. Would you agree with that, David?
Yeah.
Perhaps you could go to the mic and identify yourself.
I'd like to speak, sir.
Yes, it will exceed.
David, would you say your name and everything for the record?
My name is David Papin. I'm with Capital Management, and I work for Bob Acres.
Thank you.
And yes, that, the center section of Boston's there is about 32 feet tall, so it'll be about, you know, roughly.
13, 13 feet up high, yeah.
About 13 feet taller than that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I follow up with another question to Vicki?
Yes, please.
Or staff, either one of you can, if you can answer. Are there any, what other like-sized structures are within the corporate limits of Rapid City that might give us an idea of the size of this statue? Is this going to be the largest one?
Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Vicki.
And so that's why we brought it to the planning commission as a major amendment. We haven't seen anything like this proposed in Rapid City before. Obviously, we have our presidential statues downtown. We've got archways and such and other features in park systems. The most similar that we would have is over at Storybook Island, but beyond that, we really don't have anything that would be representative of an icon or a feature of our nation that's being proposed on private property or public property. And so it goes to the character of the neighborhood, and when our director looked at this in determining whether or not he could sign off of it as a minimal amendment, minimal amendments are meant so that if the staff approves of something, it's not noticeable by those members of the planning commission as they drive by, knowing that they earnestly reviewed a site, and that their due diligence in approving that site is intact. And the applicant did concur that obviously this would be noticed, and so did make the application for the major amendment, but that is a discussion that we encourage you to have with David this morning.
And Madam Chair, if I may just ask one other question.
Yes, please.
Of the applicant.
Yes.
If this were to be postponed so that the planning commissions could have more time on this, would that hinder the construction of this in any way for an additional two weeks just for consideration?
It would in the fact that weather is approaching and, and we have to drill the, we have to drill the piers to, to put the statue in, and so we, we would like, we've already had it for six weeks now, getting it to, getting it to this point. And when we, we, we own the statue now. I mean, we have it, we have it in a warehouse, so it doesn't, it's not getting public attention. The, the statue itself, you know, met all the requirements to the minimum except for the fact that they wanted to bring it past you guys, and, and we, we would really like to, to proceed forward with getting it up.
Thank you, and I can appreciate that. The reason I'm asking is I know this is the first I'd seen it when the agenda came out, and even though I'm not a voting member on here, I do sit on the city council, my concern would only be that if, as large as this is going to be, and I do like the Statue of Liberty, and I, I actually like the looks of it, and, and I think it would be a good fit, I, I'm just wondering about a precedent setting of competing, can I get a larger one somewhere else in Rapid City? So, that would be my major concern, and just asking on behalf of the planning commissions if they had wanted a little bit more time, so.
And staff was very clear, I mean, we could have actually made this, made this, the base for it, you know, taller and whatnot, but we kept it under the 45 feet. We kept it, you know, they, everyone felt like that exceeding that limit would be, would be overkill.
Well, I do, I'm trying to remember, it just seems to me, in Rapid City, didn't we have a big boy a few years, way back when? And so we had the big boy statue that was sitting out there, and that's about the last time I can remember something that big being an icon.
I think the dinosaurs, the dinosaurs on the hill.
Yeah, the dinosaurs up on the hill are good, too. You have to look up to see those, though.
Yeah.
This one's, I think it's going to be right in your face, but, I'll yield. Thank you.
Steve?
I'm looking at the picture you have of the Statue of Liberty here. It looks absolutely amazing, and we're talking about the height, that arm must go a long ways up there, so we're not talking about 45 for the, the statue itself. We've got an arm that hangs up there quite a ways, so you know, you're looking at, at the top of the head, really, is what I'm looking at height. This thing is absolutely incredible that we can have something like this here in Rapid City. I think it fits over there. I mean, it's absolutely beautiful. I'm not sure why I haven't, why we need more time for that. I mean, to me, if somebody wants to build a bigger one somewhere else, more power to them. But as far as this particular site and this particular issue right here, I'm 100% behind you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dennis?
Yes, would it be possible to reduce the base and lower this by 15 to 20 feet and still have that impact because of the location?
Structurally, you could not reduce the base by 15 to 20 feet. We could reduce the base by six, or eight, maybe. It has to have that structural component on the bottom. Part of the staff recommendations also is that the engineering be provided, and we've already, we already have the engineering done, and that base is actually a structural component of the statue. It has to withstand, it's, they, they made it to withstand 180 mile an hour wind, is what they, they, the engineers recommended. So we, it's a lot of really big overkill.
I understand that, but considering the enormous size, we already had a concern about the hotel's ultimate size, that we went ahead and approved that size limit as an amendment. Now we have even something larger sticking out here.
Actually, it'll be, it'll be shorter than the hotel by quite a bit.
Well.
And, and we actually dropped, in the, in the staff amendment, we dropped the top floor from seven to six. We, we dropped the top floor down completely off.
Oh, did you?
Yes, and, and because everyone had concerns with that, and, and so we did drop a story on the hotel, and, and the hotel will, will exceed the height of the statue quite a bit. So, and, and proportionately, she, she will look, you know, she will fit just, just fine. She will be within the, she'll be shorter than the hotel that, that will be behind her.
Okay, I, the base just overwhelms me. You know, the statue itself doesn't, but the base does, and if there's any way to possibly shorten that by at least 10 feet or so, I, I would be much more supportive of it at that point.
I did have that, that conversation with the engineer, and we could, could in fact reduce it by eight.
John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I like it. I don't want it shorter than this. I think that the impact of, of public art is something that, from the trout down on the west side to the presidential statues downtown and other public art, we've had discussions of whether it would fit or whether it wouldn't, and they've all become icons in the community. And I think public and private art are something that diversity is good. I think this fits with the character of the neighborhood very well. The mall for decades has been an attraction for visitors to this community and a part of the economic development of this community, and I just like it the way it is. So, I'm going to be supporting the amendment, and matter of fact, whenever the chair is ready, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve this.
Steve?
I'm going to agree with John there. I hope you don't bring it down, because part of an attraction sometimes is the fact that it, when you're looking at art that is big, and I liked it, it's bold, and you stepped outside of the box here for Rapid City, and I, I was part of the downtown with, with Don Purdue as far as putting the statues up down there. I'm a permanent board member of that, and I can tell you, I heard, Don and I and Dollar heard no every time we tried to put this project together. I can't tell you how many times we were told you'd never do it. You walk around, it's there, and there are pictures all across the nation now, across the world, but we were told you'd never get it done, it can't be done, so I hope you stick to this. I love it. It's fantastic, and thank you for bringing it.
Thank you.
Jan? Jan?
I'm just asking a question of the staff. It's my understanding that, that height meant the code requirements, and you're just bringing it to us because it's unusual not that, not that there was something that violated any of the regulations that govern public art or buildings.
Vicki?
Yes, you are, you are correct. It meets the height, the requirements of the general commercial zoning district, and a minimal amendment is one that should not be noticed. It should be a shifting of parking, landscaping, maybe a slight reduction in a setback. We figured you folks would notice this if you drove by, and so it's something we brought to you for your consideration, and this is the discussion we were hoping to have today.
Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain the motion. John?
I think I already did.
Okay. And it's motions made by John and seconded by Steve to approve this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One in opposition? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, please.
Item number six is a final plan development to allow a townhome development on property in the northeast corner of Enchantment Pines Drive and Enchantment Road. And with that, I will show you some slides. The property is currently zoned, low-density residential. This planned development is the tool that they are using in order to construct townhomes on the property. There are currently six lots. Each of those lots will have a townhome, two townhomes on it. They will have to come back later and subdivide those into individual townhome lots for a total of 12 lots. An aerial of the property, and as you can see, the property is currently vacant. This would be the layout of those townhomes on each of the lots. This is a schematic of what the feature will look like for the townhomes. As you can see, there'll be one-story structures, they'll have adjoining garages, they will be wood frame structures, they'll have the same earth tone colors as what you typically see in the PLM subdivision development. Again, you can see some of the brick and stone features that they'll put on the exterior, shutters, et cetera, asphalt shingles, peaked roof, typical of what you see in that area. This is the reason that we have this on the non-consent. At the very corner of Enchantment Pines Drive and Enchantment Road, that would be the very southern lot, they are proposing a townhome unit, and they are requesting a reduction in the setback from Enchantment Pines Drive from 25 feet to 18 feet. At one of our recent planning commission meetings, we had a request to reduce a setback along a collector's street, and Enchantment Pines Drive is a collector's street, from 25 feet to 20 feet, and the planning commission was not in support of that. It was at your direction that we maintain a minimum 25-foot setback along collector's streets in order to ensure open space between the residential structure and the collector's street. In addition to that, when Enchantment Pines Drive was originally platted, the design criteria required 60 feet for a collector's street. With the adoption of the new code in 2012, we now need 68 feet. If in the future, traffic increases and we would have to then improve that street with additional lanes, we would need eight more feet of right-of-way. Four feet would come from this property. That would then reduce the setback to 14 feet. So at your recommendation, we are bringing this for your discussion today, and we are recommending that the request to reduce the setback from 18 feet to 25 feet be denied. We can't ask for 25 feet plus four feet. We don't have that right to ask for that. We have to go with what the right-of-way line is today. But if we did come in and get the right-of-way in the future, we then would have 21 feet. This is a photo of the site itself, looking northeast into the property, showing that the sign was posted as required. This is looking east on Enchantment Pines Drive. This is looking east on Enchantment Pines Drive, looking south on Enchantment Road and looking north on Enchantment Road. I did get a call yesterday from a representative of the consultant. They were unable to attend today. She was going to have the owner attend, but I don't see him here. You may want to continue this for two weeks or you may want to just act on it and they could appeal your decision to council if they didn't concur with your recommendation. We do have a member from the neighborhood that would like to come forward. We did have a brief opportunity to speak for just a moment before the meeting and they will need to get a building permit as a part of this. And as a part of that building permit, an erosion and sediment control plan will be required. And the drainage and grading on the site will have to accommodate that that comes forward as a part of what was previously submitted and approved with the plating action. I would like to add one stipulation. I do see that we missed the stipulation that would require that those lots be platted prior to a certificate of occupancy. We certainly don't want these to function as duplexes. We want them to function as townhomes. So if we could add a stipulation to the staff recommendation that prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, a minor plat be approved. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have. And we do have Jeanette in the audience and she would like to speak to this as well.
Jeanette? Would you identify yourself and say where you live?
Okay, madam and others. I'm Jeanette Cowan and I live at four, six, one, one Cambria Circle. And I'm here today because I received an invitation and I have three major concerns. Number one is I'm concerned about the value and quality of the houses that are going to be across from where I live. And the other concern is erosion. There's some major erosion problems in that area. And so I'm concerned that it's properly looked at and addressed. And the third concern is the drainage. When we have some major gully washers that come through, the water in the Cooley and around my area really builds up a bunch. And so I'm concerned about the water having, how Mother Nature is allowing it the flow that it has now. If that is interrupted, I'm concerned about the backup of the water. And I guess that's my major concerns and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
We thank you for coming. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Vicki, can you put that slide back up where it shows the proposed eighteen-foot setback? And the location of that townhome adjacent to that?
That one?
That's the one, thank you. I think I understand why they are asking for this, but based on the collector's street. Before I get to my point, what area town is the Enchantment Pines in? The aerials, I don't have a size adjustment and I am having a little problem figuring out where I am in this city on this one.
And here we thought all the discussion regarding Enchantment Pines Drive, you would certainly know. This is just north of the new Walmart on the south side of town.
That's where I thought it was, that's where I thought it was. So I'm good, but I didn't want to find out. I was at a fire station out on Sheridan Lake Road either, so. I can't support the reduction in the setback on there because of the previous discussion regarding the collector's street. So my question is, can the developer get any more footage to maintain the construction of townhomes by moving back towards the back on this lot? In other words, if he doesn't come out so that he needs a setback on the side, does he still have room to build out on the back and stay inside the setback?
He, when I visited with a representative from the consulting firm, she had advised him to look at the designs of townhomes that he was accustomed to building to see if there was a different footprint that would work on this site. And that may be the reason why he's not here today. Maybe he found one. Certainly, as you saw from the elevation, they're quite large townhomes. Those are large garages on them and we're talking seven feet. You can see the twenty-five-foot rear yard setback to the rear of the site. He could do something that would extend out to that setback as well. And he could make this a two-story structure, too, and do a different footprint altogether. So again, this one unit could have a different look than the others. However, if you do approve this setback and he should come in with a different elevation, structural elevation for this particular lot, we would ensure that it is of the same character and design as what was represented at this meeting so that the neighborhood is ensured that the values will be maintained.
And so that question, there are no sidewalks in this neighborhood, are there? None proposed in this plat?
There will be sidewalks installed along this, these lots as a part of the building permit. Remember, we no longer require them as subdivision improvements.
Got it. And then just to speak to the drainage, I'm not, I can understand the erosion in that neck of the woods. And I also live where drainage is a problem. So I'm assuming that the drainage thing is stipulated with regard to runoff based on the.
And again, that is one of the criteria for the building permit is to ensure that all of that erosion and sediment control and that the site grading be what was identified as a part of the plating. Because remember, when these were originally platted, all of your drainage plans were submitted as a part of that. Ted and I and others have been meeting in staff meetings to ensure that there, that we eliminate the disconnect between the drainage plan that's submitted with the subdivision plan and what then gets approved as a part of a building permit. So Jeanette's comments today were well-heard and it's something that we will be looking at as these building permits come forward. Unfortunately, sometimes the builders themselves can see that if they could level an area a little bit more and give their property, their client, a little more yard space, in essence, what they're doing is they're impeding a drainage channel and that's something that we're trying to eliminate as being an issue in the future.
Well, it is of major concern to me as we approve these development lots since I'm sort of at the bottom of the hill on a lot of development over the past twenty years. So I understand what Jeanette brought to us this morning and I'd like to see that disconnect addressed in the building permit process. Thank you for my comments. I guess at this point, the recommendation of staff is to not approve the eighteen-foot setback.
Correct.
I'll move per staff recommendation.
Item's been moved in second. Eric, would you like to speak?
Point of clarification, Madam Chair. Is it also the motion maker's intent that the additional stipulation as noted by staff be added?
Yes, sure. Plat away.
With the additional staff recommendation item. Eric?
I, Vicki basically took my point. I mean, there's six townhomes here. You could get a foot and two inches out of each of those pretty easily, I think. So I agree that we should not grant the exception on the eighteen feet.
Any other comments? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Any other items? If not, I'd take a motion for adjournment. Eric moved to adjourn as a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Thank you. Amanda?